I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Dorati?
Present.
Foltz?
Present.
Rappaport?
Present.
Richards?
Present.
Sharp?
Present.
Spezak?
Here.
Statchow?
Present.
And Hornbuckle?
Present.
Approval of minutes from the June 1st meeting?
So good.
Mr. Chairman?
Support.
Motion to Vice Commissioner Spezak and supported by Commissioner Foltz. Roll call please.
Roll call, vote to approve the June 1st, 2022 meeting minutes. Dorati?
Yes.
Foltz?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Spezak?
Yes.
Statchow?
Outstanding.
Hornbuckle?
Outstanding.
Minutes are approved.
If there's anything that is not on our agenda you'd like to bring before the commission, this would be the time to do it. I say nothing, we'll move right into our first case, which is case 1716B, site plan and special land use approval for trailer storage, 1313 South Newburgh. Mr. Abrams.
Thanks Chairman, I did not see the petition. Okay, I just wanted to make sure the petitioner's here. This subject property is located on the east side of Newburgh between Cherry Hill and Palmer, and it butts the railroad tracks on the northeast side, on your screen, highlighted in yellow. There's two properties related to this business, however, for this site plan and special land use approval, we are discussing only the triangular shaped piece of property to the north. Eventually, we will require the property owner and business owner to combine both together. Tonight, the property owner is requesting approval for the outdoor storage of semi-trailers on the vacant parcel. This is a special land use in the I-1 light industrial zoning district, which this property is zoned. The trailer storage operation is tied to the general office and warehousing use that recently occupied the existing building to the south. Generally, this business receives and distributes goods for various retail facilities within southeast Michigan. The surrounding uses and general area, as you're familiar with, are industrial in nature, and the future land use designation for this piece of property is also industrial. Some site plan characteristics pertaining to the triangular shaped parcel, the semi-trailer parking area will be constructed using asphalt material according to engineering design standards. The site will be accessed by one full-service driveway off of South Newburgh that is also being used for the warehousing building as well. The site will be able to accommodate the entry via that curb cut for the semi-trailers and the semi-trucks as well. The site complies with landscaping requirements and screening and provides a 50-foot wide buffer along Newburgh. In this area over here, there's also a berm associated with that buffer, 57 spruce trees, 16 ash trees, and about 50 or 60 shrubs. There's a six-foot tall chain link fence in this area as well, proposed along the front perimeter along Newburgh. The hours of operation are Monday through Fridays from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and the proposal is required to provide stormwater detention basin to comply with Wayne County's stormwater management ordinance, and it's at the north part of the site over here. The administration and planning department are recommending approval of this petition for granting special land use and site plan approval contingent upon department requirements and recommendations. Happy to answer any questions, petitioner is here.
Thank you sir. Would you like to introduce yourself for us?
Good afternoon, my name is Paul, and I am a partner in the architect firm, engineering architecture firm. I'm representing a client, owns the property. We're pretty much in total agreement with everything that was said, we're merely paving this triangle and storing some trailers outdoors while they're being marshaled in and out of the facility next door.
Okay, nothing else?
Nothing else, no heavy equipment, no motorized equipment, no fueling, no, nothing detrimental to the environment.
Very good, this is a public hearing, we'll see, does anybody on my left wish to speak on this? Anybody? All right, we'll open up the commission. Commissioner Statchow.
Yeah, hi, good evening. I just wanted to mention, as I look through the blueprints and the landscape that you're paying attention to, we appreciate that very much because that does add a plus to the city. I realize what you are going to be storing there as far as the trailers are concerned, but taking that into consideration was appreciated.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate that.
Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Rappaport.
So the triangular plot that's going to be used for storage, is this a new acquisition for the owner, or has this been owned for a while?
It's been within the last couple of years, I mean, it's fairly new.
And has it been, has it been used for rough, for anything?
Yes.
No, it's a raw piece of land.
Statchow?
Yes.
Raw piece of land?
Hornbuckle?
Yeah.
Yes.
And obviously, its proximity to the railroad tracks doesn't make it particularly desirable
Good luck sir.
Thank you very much.
Looks like it's going to be very beneficial for you, and like he mentioned, it's a dead
for other uses?
Exactly, yeah, exactly, it's a very compatible use.
piece of property.
I have...
Clean up that corner, yeah.
So it'll work out fine for you, and thank you for bringing here, and good luck at the No other questions, motions in order?
Chairman?
council. Commissioner Rappaport, you come in.
Thank you very much gentlemen for bringing some life to that property.
Thank you. We'll move into our next case, which is also a public hearing.
I will, regarding case number 1716B, site plan and special land use approval for
It's case 1933A, special land use and site plan approval for the proposed marijuana
trailer storage at 1313 South Newburgh, east side of Newburgh, west of the railroad,
collectigated facility at 37800 Cherry Hill.
by Mario Kashi.
Yes, okay. Mr. Abrams.
Thanks Chairman. The applicant today is seeking site plan and special land use approval for the construction
With L&amp;M Express LLC, I'd like to move to close the public hearing with normal rules
of a 40, approximately 49,000 square foot marijuana co-located facility.
and send this matter to the city council with a recommendation for approval as the
The subject property is 6.65 acres and currently zoned I-1 light industrial.
proposal meets the standards as noted in the brief provided by the administration.
This property was split, well, combined and split several months ago, forming two properties,
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Spezak, supported by Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner
this red outlined piece here where the marijuana co-located parcel sit, I'm sorry, business
Rappaport, supported by Commissioner Richards, roll call please.
Vote, vote to approve case number 1716B, Dorati?
will sit, and then this rectangle piece to the north with access off of it.
Yes.
Foltz?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Adjacent land uses and zoning, primarily industrial zoning and uses in nature, a lot
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
of vacant land, there's another marijuana co-located business conditionally approved in this area here that will be visiting the planning commission next month. Properties here are residential in nature, not directly adjacent with several hundred feet of setback between the marijuana co-located business and the residential uses, and there are some residential uses here with again, a couple hundred feet of setback in addition to the railroad as well. Some site plan characteristics regarding this site plan, access is proposed via one full-service driveway along Cherry Hill in this area over here to the east of the property along Cherry Hill. The site does comply with the parking requirement for both marijuana retail business and grow and processing facilities. As you know, the co-located facility encompasses both the retail portion and the grow and process portion as well. There's landscaping plan in your backup, proposed landscaping for parking areas and open space is compliant with the landscaping requirements of the zoning ordinance. There is an oddity in this site plan where their required landscaping along Cherry Hill is located sort of directly adjacent to the corners of the building, and this is due to a conflict with the drain easement along the front property line, so they're required to stay out of that, that's why it's showing up, not the full length of the front property line along Cherry Hill. There's additional landscaping exceeding the minimum requirements throughout the site plan as well. They did apply for a tree permit, and that is being discussed internally, and they will fully comply with that as required, and I'll touch base on that in a second. The proposed building complies with the bulk requirements of the zoning ordinance, that includes building height, lot coverage, front setbacks, well, all the setbacks including side and rear as well. There are some renderings in your backup, and I'll put them on the screen here, essentially what the building will look like. The proposal includes stormwater detention basin at the north side of the property in the rear. This also serves as somewhat of a barrier between that residential area that you saw several hundred feet to the north, and exterior lighting is a combination of pole-mounted LED lights and wall lights, all of which are in compliance with the lighting ordinance. The administration and planning department are recommending approval. There are several conditions that we have imposed on previous marijuana facilities and co-located businesses as well, I'll read those on the record, and the petitioner has already been provided these conditions as well. Number one, required compliance with the city's tree ordinance. Number two, the facility must employ a facility-wide odor control plan designed for marijuana cultivation for the ventilation of odor control and noxious gas mitigation. A security plan that complies with the marijuana business ordinance must be adhered to and submitted to the planning department and police department, which has already been done. The marijuana business licensee shall enter into a legally binding community benefits agreement, that has already been done. Continued compliance with all applicable local and state laws, including the marijuana business ordinance. All signage and advertising must comply with the marijuana business ordinance, and finally, hours of operation to the public shall be limited between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. That is all I have, it looks like the entire team is here from Quality Roots. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission has. Thank you.
Very good gentlemen, you can bring as many people up as you choose.
My name is Mark Clark, I'm the president of Quality Roots.
Hello, my name is Craig Ernoff, I'm the regulatory attorney.
Andrew Danhurst, Stucky Vitale Architects, architect for the project.
Anything you wish to add?
Well, if I may, just jump in, on the odor control, because one of the conditions, as well as just complying with state and local rules, Quality Roots is licensed already as a retailer in several other communities throughout the state, it's an operator that understands this community, the cannabis regulatory agency's rules, regulations, they've enjoyed, you know, a really nice success as they're growing their company out, they have four operating stores right now, they have three more in the pipeline, including this one in Westland, that's also going to fulfill their supply needs. So they are following all the laws and rules, they'll have all their employees, you know, submit their iChats and hold doses required by the state, so we will have all that as well. On the odor control, you know, this is something that in cannabis has been ever evolving and improving. There's carbon filtration, and Andrew can talk about it from the architect standpoint, of, you know, it's just how they're installed and used. There's every intention, we had it in the initial plans when this was approved by the council initially and gone through the whole process, but odor mitigation is important to the company as well, and is built into their plans with every intention to go through on that.
Very good, thank you.
If you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think that's good, I mean, if we want to talk more specifics, it'll be a three-part system throughout the building. It's within the air handling units within the building, which are drawing fresh air into the building and exhausting air, everything's pre-carbon filtered. The importance isn't just neighbors, but it's also the people that work in these facilities, these are pretty noxious gases that happen within. So within the rooms, there's additional carbon filter that circulates within the room, and then thirdly, there's carbon filters in spaces that are connecting any of these rooms, so corridors, trim rooms, processing, the retail portion will also have carbon filtration, even though in this retail portion, we don't have as much concern about odor, but there's still a concern that something could be opened within the store, I guess, and off-gas some odors, so that space will also be handled with carbon inline filters. This is pretty standard, like Craig mentioned, throughout the industry, so I think it's been tested, and there's new technologies that have come online that help this, and I think, I think there shouldn't be any concern for...
And all the gentlemen are with you?
Yeah, there's a series of engineers and...
Okay, it is a public hearing, but if any of you wish to speak, you may, but you don't have to.
It's an expensive meeting for us.
Just want to be sure you have...
Yeah, we want to make sure everything...
Well, you know...
We're here to answer questions.
I have to say that the setbacks in your projects are well, well, well beyond what's required, and I think that's going to be very beneficial for you and your business and your filtration. I can see, I don't see any disparity at all in that, when you look at the setbacks that you're offering, that are doubled and tripled and 30 times more than what's required, so I think that's outstanding. So we will open it up to the commission.
Mr. Chairperson?
Yes.
Perhaps one of you would like to speak, I don't, I don't know.
Would you like to speak on this?
I have the recorder.
Yeah, sorry there.
My apologies, sir.
I like the facility idea. I'm a smoker, I'm a medical smoker, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Foltz?
How did you mention, just a little while ago, that there were three other facilities in this area? Can you tell me, give me names of the cities?
We have one in Hamtramck, one in Monroe Township, and one in Emmett Township, and one in Corona.
And Corona as well, which is outside of Alaso.
Okay.
Right.
I must say though, when I first read this, this big word, co-located, allocated?
Right, co-located.
What does that mean?
Means it's not just retail, it'll be growing as well as processing.
Well, there's more than one service.
Each license has its own titles, they'll share the space.
Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Statchow.
Yeah, I'll take through the chair to the petitioners. You mentioned the, you know, the air quality system that you have set up, just for the viewers that are participating and viewing this, what, do they have any concerns, or what concerns have you addressed in relationship to maybe the sewage system? And what you might be using, and have you taken any steps so that there will not be any sewage problems in regards to the chemicals that you're going to be using?
Yeah, storm is one concern, as well as sanitary discharge, so these facilities spend a lot of money on fertilizers within, and really, the goal is zero discharge, because they don't want any of this going into the system. So as this project comes online and is commissioned in these individual rooms that do the growing where these fertilizers are used, and if that's the concern, is truly discharge into that, these rooms in the end have no discharge. As they're coming online, like I said, water is controlled literally at every single plant as a point of distribution, so this isn't like watering your yard, it's literally watering every plant to a very specific calibration based on the species, so...
Okay, and just one other question too, you will have a storefront facility, what type of actual products, I know there's the different product lines and so forth that are out now, and also, once again, for the viewers, is there anything that you'd like to say in regards to the product that you'll be...
Sure, the store will be a full-service store, so it's...
You would get closer to the mic, we can hear you, but we want to...
Sure, the store is going to be a full-service store, so it'll be adult use, and it'll have flower, which is, you know, the plant being grown in the back, that makes up roughly about half the sales for this store, and if you look at the state, it's roughly half of what all the sales are in the state. The other half is going to be some form of concentrate or edible, so there's edibles like chocolates or gummies, there's also tinctures and oils that can be used, and so the store has a wide variety and a full spectrum of catalog of product. What Quality Roots will be doing in the production side is producing their own flower, as well as their own products to supply the store, in addition to purchasing from other suppliers that are already fulfilling their store's needs throughout the state.
Okay, and then you'll have some type of signage in regards to the age limit of anyone who can enter the building as well?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yep, that's correct. Yeah, there's, there's, as you walk in, the sale space is actually past the regulated door, so there's no access through there without having shown your ID and been signed in and following the compliance.
State and we are very strict on that.
Any other comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Through the chair to the petitioner. I have two questions. First one is, the piece of property you're cutting off, the back half of it, what's going to happen to that?
Don't know if there's a plan for it.
I don't know if there's a plan for that.
It's a separate owner?
It's a separate owner?
Yes.
So they're going to have access off of Florence then?
Correct.
Okay, so it'll have a new address?
Correct.
Okay, that was one question. Second question is, what kind of security are you going to have in the building?
I'm not touching that.
Security is 24/7, it's required by state law to be videoed for, you probably know the rules on it more.
30 days of backup.
30 days of backup.
And every inch of the facility has to be...
Inside and out.
Inside and out has to be videotaped.
But is there going to be a physical security present there?
I don't know if we know the answer to that yet.
Yeah, there is on check-in, there's an individual floor you can enter product floor, and this is also visual, so there's no visual into the product floor until you've been checked in, so that person is a full-time person as well, and depending on different centers, this varies in every city.
Right.
So if we, there is a concern for...
If it's necessary, then we will add it.
My concern is not inside the facility...
Outside.
Is outside, once they got the product and they're out of the parking lot, if there's nobody to patrol that area, then you might have some bad things going on out there.
The reality is, is that the cameras will actually have the whole parking lot and everything covered. The state is really keen on making sure that the camera coverage and that these are not facilities of opportunity or crimes of opportunity, they're very well secure at all throughout the state, and anytime there's been some people trying to poke at it, the state and the local community's have been quick to really stomp that out. And so to that end, you know, that there will be visuals, everybody will be on camera as they're safely in the parking lot and exiting the facility, to the extent that there's the security requirements within the ordinance, Quality Roots will equal or exceed those as required.
There's no concern.
I already knew the answer to that, but I wanted you to say it on camera so that the television audience could understand more.
Oh, we understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, Quality Roots wants to be part of your community, if there was ever a concern in any of their other municipalities, this is addressed right away, so it's part of their goal is to educate the community, make sure it's a safe environment for people leaving and coming to the store, surely if there was ever...
Absolutely, if there's ever an issue, yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes, I just want to know, will you have special trained reps, like when you go in for, to let you know, okay, well, you're hurting or whatever, we can, you know, you can use this oil or something?
Yeah, the staff is both highly trained and passionate about what they do, provide, you know, a quality experience from the store, their ratings are very high, their customer is very loyal, their customer base, they've grown it over time, and that's, that comes down to the fact that the Quality Roots as a whole are retailers, they fully understand how to meet their customers' needs, and have exceeded better than most in the industry.
I think that separates us from our competition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just have a question about traffic flow, now you are next to one of the city's hottest railroad tracks, and it shuts down that street, how do you plan on dealing when that train stops and traffic is at your doorstep? Any signage, any, you know, how do you plan on handling that?
Yeah, ingress and egress was a concern on the site from day one when we were looking at it, and it was part of the original licensing was, you know, how many, how many points of entry into site, how do we manage circulation on-site, and we feel that we've addressed it really with kind of this individual egress and ingress on the site. Now proximity to railroad, what'll happen when a train stops? I don't know that I, we really know the answer to that, but I think it would be like any other business that would be here, you're, you know, you're in a city that has a railroad track, there's many cities in our state that have this, and you deal with it when it comes, and if there's some sort of failure and it's long-term, surely there's ways out beyond having to turn right out of sight, and hopefully left is available when those things happen.
Yeah, I just see this being a spot for a lot of turnaround, you know, people, train come, they go, see it's a long line, and come through your place.
Hopefully they'll come into the store and...
But hopefully.
And shout out to them when they're over 21.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, very good. Motion's in order, Commissioner Rappaport.
Oh, not for the motion, I have some commentary, but I'll take the motion if I must afterwards.
Make your comments, sir.
So the first question I have is probably best to the attorney counsel.
Sure.
Thank you very much for addressing the odor issue, it is definitely a concern, I certainly don't want to call out a business in a neighboring community where there are in any way as a failure, but my family members have expressed to me the nearby facility in a neighboring community, and the business there, the neighboring business, you can't get away from the smell of marijuana. As you say, it's not only a concern for, for other business ITs, it's definitely an issue for, for employees of the business, and I'm very, very happy to hear you, you're being very proactive.
Proactive.
And cutting edge on the...
Right.
The second one, maybe might be able to be answered by the petitioner's attorney, but more than likely is going to be able to be answered by the administration. Portion of this was already asked and answered, but the parcel that we're looking at, and if we can go back to the aerial with the red, with the red, there we go, assuming that this is north towards the top of the screen, the central most rectangle that stretches from Cherry Hill to Florence, I'm assuming that the horizontal line that is northmost is hiding a, is hiding a white line that demarks two parcels, is that correct?
Are you talking about this rectangle piece here?
Yes, is that one or two parcels?
As it's shown on the screen, it's one, it was recently split, the parcel map is only updated a couple times a year, so if this hasn't been updated, that's why I drew the red line on there.
Very good, and I also to assume then that the triangular piece to the west is also incorporated...
Proactive.
And cutting edge on the...
Right.
The second one, maybe might be able to, well, be answered by the, by the petitioner's attorney, but more than likely is going to be able to be answered by the, by the administration. Portion of this was already asked and answered, but the, the parcel that we're looking at, and if we can go back to the aerial with the red, with the red, there we go. Assuming that this is north towards the top of the screen, the, the central most, most rectangle that stretches from Cherry Hill to Florence, I'm assuming that the, that the horizontal line that is northmost is hiding a, is hiding a white line that demarks two parcels. Is that correct?
Are you talking about this rectangle piece here?
Yes, is that one or two parcels?
As it's shown on the screen, it's one. It was recently split. The parcel map is only updated a couple times a year, so if this hasn't been updated, that's why I drew the, the red line on there.
Very good. Am I also to assume then that the triangular piece to the, to the west is also incorporated into the, into the trapezoidal red outlined property?
Yes, this was a combination and split simultaneously that were planned in commission several months ago.
Well, you will, of course, forgive me for, for not remembering that. Okay, my concern obviously was for, was for creating landlocked parcels. As the lines exist, it would appear that we would create two landlocked parcels, one triangular shaped and one rectangular shaped.
Where?
Landlocked parcel would be towards that, that...
Here?
Triangular parcel would be inside of the, would be inside of the trapezoid.
This was all one parcel, no?
Well, that's what I did not remember. That's why I asked the question. But other than that, I have nothing further. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And if the, if it please, Chair, I'll take the motion.
Very good, sir.
Very well then. Regarding case number 1933A, special land use, site plan approval, gross marijuana co-located facility at 37800 Cherry Hill, West Newburgh, on the north side of Cherry Hill, by Quality Roots Incorporated. I move to close the public here, with the normal rules, and send this petition to city council with a recommendation for approval conditioned upon the petitioner meeting and/or exceeding the requirements outlined by the administration and previously mentioned direction.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Rappaport, supported by Commissioner Foulks.
Second.
Oh, Commissioner Stackhouse, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to recommend approval of case number 1933A. Durante?
Yes.
Volks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Spiezak?
Yes.
Stackhouse?
Yes.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for being so thorough.
Thank you to everyone, thank you.
On your, on your, on your responses and explaining everything, phenomenal effort for those folks at home. Thank you. Go ahead, if you go to city council.
Feel free, thank you. Thank you very much.
Welcome to your residence.
Sorry?
Kidding. I'm amazing. I'm a hostess.
Absolutely. Really forward to having you.
Counsel? Do you want to say anything?
Yeah.
Mr. Ayew, do you have anything else?
Nope. We will have an, an August meeting. There's a couple items on there. One of them is actually one of the co-located businesses as well. And then we have a land division as part of the school district, selling off some land. And then we'll be asking you to reschedule the December 7th planning commission meeting to December 6th, which is...
Very good. Very good. Any discussion from the members? If not, a motion is ordered to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Spiezak and supported by Commissioner Richards. All in favor?
Say aye.
Thank you, everyone.